Just as a quick overview, just in terms of what it is that we're going to touch on in this particular meeting, what I'd like to do is kind of give the reasoning behind this audit request as Chair of the Audit Committee. Following that, I'm hopeful that we can talk to Young and he can give us an idea as to the objectives of the audit, as well as the scope, training, and methodology that he will use as he conducts this audit. Then hopefully we'll hear from members of the Selection Committee very briefly. I will highlight later on that Young is also, or Young will highlight later on, and Cecilia, that they are going to do a deep dive themselves in terms of potentially interviewing members of the Selection Committee. So their role today would just simply be to comment on what their thoughts are briefly of the process that they've undertaken for the last two rounds, as well as any comments related to the potential audit. And then finally, we'll hear from Council members. I just want to acknowledge the councilors who are on the call. I see Counselor Letterman is on the, is in the meeting. Let me see if I can, I know I saw Counselor Whitfield is also in attendance. Am I missing anyone else? I saw Counselor Allen. I don't see Counselor Allen now. Let me just look through.
I'm there. I'm listed under, it's got Susan's name on it, but I'm.
Okay.
Counselor Davila is.
Is Counselor Davila here? So we will acknowledge Counselor Davila as well. So welcome everyone. And so we'll get right into the heart of it. And we're also joined by a number of members from the administration and also members of the committee. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedules to be a part of this meeting. Hopefully it will be productive and, you know, all of you will be able to assist in the upcoming audit. I also see the Solicitor is on the call from the Mayor's Office. So we appreciate you Solicitor Bakula. I knew that you, out of all of them, would not miss this one. The, so the reasoning behind the audit, it is no secret that we, all of the city councilors have received a letter. And that is just one component, a letter from an individual who certainly highlighted some issues with respect to another applicant. So when I received this letter, actually a couple of different letters that this individual had sent, that rang the alarms for me. That caused some significant concerns as it was alleging violation of zoning laws, as well as violations of current and past practice of the Selection Committee as it relates to selecting these candidates. So that, in my opinion, if true, would have been extremely problematic. And so clearly, we don't have enough evidence to determine whether it's true, nor do I think that's our obligation. But that is one of the reasons why, you know, I thought that we ought to look into it deeper. In addition, I've heard from some other applicants who have not been selected, who are wondering why it is that they weren't selected, not just for the first round, but during the second round as well. And some of those particular applicants might have finished fifth and sixth as they were looking for a dispensary. And then they dropped from fifth and sixth during the second round to maybe seventh and eighth. And so they were not selected once again. And one of their issues, well, one of the issues that they cited was that there wasn't a lot of transparency in terms of either being able, you know, after the fact to compare their scores to some of the other individuals who were selected. In addition to being able to look at the individual scoring criteria and how, you know, how other folks fared, you know, in comparison to them. And in order for them to improve, it would seem to me, and in order for us to get the best applicants, you know, it would seem to me that that information would have been readily available. And clearly, it was not. And so, in addition, they weren't able to look at individual scores by the Selection Committee, which I think I just said. But on top of that, you know, my concern was, you know, did we mimic the same process from round one to round two? It is my understanding that the Selection Committee may have scored things a little bit differently. Whereas during the first round, they may have scored the entire application. And potentially during the second round, maybe they only scored a section. And so I wanted to know, you know, what type of impacts might that have had, you know, on the overall efficacy of the process? And, you know, in terms of individuals being selected? Did that potentially, you know, cause individuals who might not have ordinarily been selected to get selected? What effect did that have on the grading criteria? And then there were some other, and then the other thing is, you know, we started off with four. My understanding of the process was that we are going to select four, you know, dispensaries each round over the course of, I believe, I forget where we're at, 12 maybe, maybe three rounds? And I could be wrong with those numbers, but I noticed that this round, we selected six. And Counselor Whitfield, I see your hand is up in the queue. When I finish, Counselor Whitfield, can your question wait until?
It's just that I don't know who some people are, like the phone number and the Krista. I would just like to know who these people are. That's a, I know who BS is because of his picture. So, but, um, you know, if they could just spell out their names, so we'll know.
Good point. Krista, do we know who you are? Can you announce yourself and tell us who you are?
Yeah, that would be my daughter Krista Santanello. I'm Vincent Santanello. My wife is one of the applicants on the cultivation side, represented by Attorney Shay.
Got it. Was there any, I do see a 535-6603 number. Can you announce yourself and let us know who you are as well?
Cheryl Shay.
And you represent, are you here representing someone?
I, I'm on the, in with Vinnie, as well as being represented by Brian Shay.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Was there anyone else that I missed? I don't believe so. Um, so just circling back, there were other questions in terms of why this round, you know, we had six individuals chosen as opposed to four. And so I didn't know if there was any rhyme or reason behind that, but certainly that could have a significant impact on the selection process itself. And then finally, delivery, for delivery, you know, I noticed that there was only, there were only one individual who was selected and I believe applied for a delivery, for a courier license, and then also for a transportation license. And so I think the question around that is, you know, did Springfield do everything that it could have done in terms of actually marketing, you know, marketing those particular types of, you know, of industries? And whether we should have or whether we can do better? And so the purpose of this audit is to, not necessarily as an indictment, although if there is any sort of wrongdoing, we certainly want to correct it because there is tons of money that is involved in this and tons of money that folks have already invested. So we certainly want to identify if there is any wrongdoing that. But at the same time, we want to insulate ourselves against liability. And then we want to figure out how we get better for future rounds. And so that is the purpose of this, you know, of this audit. We are not going to delve into any particular applicants. That is not the purpose of the meeting at all. We want to highlight the process and we want to delve deeper into the process itself in conversations with Young and Cecilia, who I appreciate for being here and for taking this task on. They've highlighted that they are going to have that one-on-one interaction. I've already sent Young and Cecilia the letters that we received, I believe from Attorney Shay, who was on the call. They wanted to know if there were any specific allegations to get that information over to them. So I forwarded that to them. And if any other allegations come to light, or if anyone else has any allegations, then I recommend them send it over to Young and Cecilia, or you can send it to me. And I will make sure that they get that information. I'd imagine that they're going to factor it all in. But for the purpose of this meeting, we are not delving into any particular applicants who have either applied in the first round or the second round. We're merely going to focus on process. And with that, I will turn it over to Young, who can briefly, or Cecilia, who can briefly highlight the objectives of the audit, as well as the scope, timing, and methodology that they plan on using in this process.
You're muted, Young.
You're muted, Young.
Could I share my screen so I could review the objective scope methodology?
You were going to make me work, Young. Share a screen. I got it. Or do I need to give, do I need to make you host?
If you could, that'd be great. I could share my screen. Or if you have the document that I sent to you earlier from today, you could share your screen.
There's a button right next to shared screen. If you click on that, it'll say give multiple users access.
Got it. Yes. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. We'll get there. It's only been a year and a half. So who do I, so do I have to do anything else once I click that? I think you should be good, Young.
Great. Okay, so everyone should see my screen. So I'll begin with, say that at the request of the Audit Committee Chair, our office will initiate a review of the city's cannabis company selection process. Want to reiterate what Counselor Hurst had indicated. This review will focus on processes and recommendations for improvements to the processes, if applicable. Now, I wanted to go over the objective scope, timing, and methodology of our review, and I'll be happy to answer questions afterwards. The objectives of this review are as follows. To determine whether the city's selection of the cannabis companies complied with city ordinances, cannabis regulations, and procurement laws in Massachusetts. And to determine whether impartial and equal treatment is offered to all segments of the vendor community, including minority and women-owned and operated enterprises. The scope of our review will consist of Phase One and Two of the city's cannabis selection processes. Expect to commence the review in July. And we estimate that the review will be completed in September and expect to issue our report around that time. City management will be given the opportunity to respond to our findings and recommendations. And the responses will be included in our report. To accomplish our objectives, we will perform the following procedures. We'll review cannabis regulations, procurement laws in Massachusetts. Review requests and proposals. Review vendor proposals. We'll interview members of the Selection Committee. We'll interview city employees. We'll review the process for evaluating vendors and recommendations to award contracts. We'll interview and research other municipalities in Massachusetts to understand their processes in awarding cannabis host agreements, promoting cannabis RFPs to minority and women-owned and operated enterprises. We'll also test submitted proposals against the procedural requirements and will perform other procedures as needed. Again, I want to focus that we're going to look at processes here and we're not conducting an investigation of malfeasance. It's just looking at processes and making recommendations for improvement. But with that said, I'll turn it over to the Audit Committee or Council members to see if they have any questions.
I'm sorry, Young, can you stop sharing your screen or do I need to do that?
Yep, I'll do that. Okay.
All right, so at this point in time, I think it only makes sense to entertain questions for Young and Cecilia. Again, I want to thank them for having the time and taking the time to conduct this audit. We certainly appreciate it. Counselor Allen, I see your hand is raised in the queue.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, addressed to Young and Cecilia. So this process is going to be done, you guys are going to undertake this audit process. It says you're going to include Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One, we're well along with approvals were given like two years ago. And I think a couple of places are open. Are you, are you doing that? Is there an assumption? Well, there's no assumption, I guess, but you're doing that to compare Phase One to Phase Two mainly?
Yes, primarily to understand both phases, make sure there's consistency within both processes. And if there are differences, find, identify differences and understand why there are differences.
Okay. And Phase Two, I believe, allowed for, I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure about what I'm about to say, but there was a cultivate, you know, the first one, Phase One was all retail or adult use. Phase Two included distribution, transportation, and cultivation, I thought. So they are slightly different anyway.
But yeah, we still want to understand, although the vendors are different, we want to understand processes in both phases to be clearly laid out in terms of the protocols involved. And we want to make sure that the city, just understand the city's practices in terms of those protocols.
Okay. Do you have any idea, I know you've given a timeframe of September. Do you think you can do it early September or late September? I'm trying to compare to two years ago how we did this. Our hearings on the people that ultimately got approved were in late September, but I don't.
We're going to make this a priority and we're going to try to get it done as soon as possible. But, you know, we think September is a reasonable timeframe. It's difficult to determine whether we'll come across unexpected issues that will involve more research, so it could throw wrench into our timing. But we think that's a considerable investment, mid-September.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just also add, Counselor Allen, the purpose of this is to not identify some sort of wrong or some sort of company that has done some sort of wrong or the city that has done something so glaringly wrong that the process stops. I mean, I have every expectation that the process will continue according to plan, whether we have the results of the audit or not. I think it'll be great for the city moving forward. I'm not 100% sure what impact it might have on this round. Counselor Allen, I mean Counselor Letterman.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to ask a question. I'm not a member of the Audit Committee, but appreciate hearing from Young regarding this particular request. I guess the question I had was around the process of requesting an audit. I know that, you know, I know the Audit Committee sets sort of goals within the Audit Department at the beginning of the year. And I know, Young, that you have a schedule of, you know, audits that you plan to conduct regularly. But for like this sort of, sort of request, is it just by request that your department can provide these? Or do we need to take a vote or, you know, sort of how does that work? I'm just curious in general about that.
So we do have some hours allocated with special request by City Council, members of City Council, management, or any other individual that would want an audit. And what we do is we look at the risks that are involved, public interest, and as well as the benefit of such audit. And I, as the Director of Internal Audit, make the decision to move forward with an audit. So there is no ordinance or no laws indicating that the Audit Committee needs a vote or City Council needs to vote on requesting an audit. They can make the request and I, as the Director of Internal Audit, make the decision as to whether to initiate or not.
So essentially, anybody could make a request, whether it was a counselor or member of the public or, you know, other city official. And then you would use your discretion as to whether or not you thought it was a valid, you know, a valid use of resources?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You, are there any other questions from the councilors regarding the process and how this will move forward? Okay, if there are no other questions and I see none in the queue, we will move right along to any members of the Selection Committee who wish to comment on a potential audit or certainly share any experiences that they have had during the first and second round very briefly. As I've highlighted previously, Young and Cecilia will be in contact with you all individually. But you're certainly welcome to speak now. Julie, who is the independent consultant, I appreciate you, Ms. Steiner. I know you're on vacation and so it's great to have you here. And so if you, you would like to say a few words, as I know you were instrumental in creating the process, that certainly would be welcome. I also know the Law Department is here. And I know a member of the City Council, which Counselor Whitfield, who also serves on the Selection Committee, is here as well. If you, either of you would like to comment or if you would not like to comment, that is fine too.
I'd like to.
Solicitor.
Good afternoon, everyone. So the, this is quite unusual. I've never, never seen an audit conducted while we're still in the middle of the process here. We have, as you know, gone through the selection process. And we are now in the phase of going through the awarding of host community agreements and negotiation of those agreements. And the way it works is, and I believe there was a question of the mayor issuing six awards to negotiate HCAs. My understanding was that the mayor extended more than what the council had talked about or recommended in the first round to address really some minority-owned applicants, not necessarily social equity-approved certified applicants from the Cannabis Control Committee. But the mayor thought there were some particularly strong applications and wanted to get as broad a award as possible from all sectors, so all members. And of course, a lot of this legislation deals with addressing disproportionately impacted groups that were affected. And so I think doing six, that's what it was geared to. And that was one of your questions and I'd offer that insight as far as what I know of the situation. I was not actually a member of the committee that did review, but I did participate in an overview of the process. And that's the way I handled the last one as well. And there's actually a third, you know, this is really the third time we did this. The first time was with medical marijuana. And I want to say that I think we took a very careful and a very deliberate process. We put a lot of thought into it. As I said, this is the third time we're doing this. That the whole purpose of having a solicitation and the selection process was to avoid the lack of transparency that you see in some other communities that, because there are no procurement laws in Massachusetts that require an RFP, this is something unique to Springfield, really. A few other communities have followed our lead on this. But the state does not have any requirements for procurement. So we developed this process along the lines of what we thought would bring us open, competitive, and transparent selection process. And I think we've carried that out. But as I said, we're still going through the process of negotiations of HCAs. And what happens typically, and what would happen in the process here, is if we are unable to negotiate a host community agreement with what the mayor selected as a first choice, we would then move on to other, or at least theoretically. But so there's still a lot of work to do. And I want to make sure that whatever we do, and I appreciate Counselor Hurst, your comments. I think that are very well taken, that this should look at the process and should not delve into any individual scoring by individual members. That's typically irrelevant anytime you have any sort of body or board that's making selections because they, there is no standing other than as their group selection. So it's very unusual. I've never seen anything like this happen in my 40 years of experience here with the city. But I always appreciate the work of our internal auditors and they do a tremendous job. I found them so helpful in many occasions. I want to say that, you know, all of the activities and actions that we take, including developing this unique process, were for the public interest and in the best interest of the city. And I want to, if possible, avoid any situation where we find ourselves in the midst of litigation as we did with the INSA case. And I want to make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to liability here from anyone involved. And I would hope that we do our jobs here, but also keep in mind that we don't want to get into needless litigation.
Thank you, Solicitor. I think your point is well taken. I also think Young is more than capable of doing what it is that he needs to do and at the same time being cognizant of potential litigation that may arise. Unfortunately, we might, we might be past that, Solicitor. But, you know, at the same time, let's, let's see what the investigation yields or let's see what the audit yields. And, you know, we'll go from there. I think transparency is what we all want to see. And I think that's, you know, that is the crux of the audit right now. Ms. Steiner, thank you, Solicitor.
Sure, thank you, Counselor Hurst. And I don't, I can't turn my video on for some reason. I'm not sure if that's controlled on your end, but I'm happy to just speak if you're able to hear me. So, you know, I was brought on, I, for those who don't know, I teach cannabis law and have since 2016, prior to the passage of ballot question for locally at Western New England University School of Law. Cannabis law is my passion. And, you know, my interest is and has always been on ensuring a fair process. That's why I was brought on. And so I'm more than welcome, you know, an audit, more eyes than not. It's fine with me and I certainly look forward to working with Young on explaining as much as he needs me to explain about the Phase One and Phase Two process. I was not involved in the medical components. You know, we'll, I know we're not going to go into detail. I just want to say I've not, I'm not a voting member whatsoever. I don't review the applications, that level of what I'll just call significant legwork. Significant, you know, hours and hours is done by an 11-member review team. is done by an 11-member review team. And that's really quite unique. As Attorney Pakula said, there are others that are seeing this as a good model to avoid any sort of undue influence. But I could tell you, I have sat in both Phase One and Phase Two of what I imagine is being challenged, which is their decision-making. And I would have absolutely no qualms in saying I have no reason to think any member of that 11-member Selection Committee in Phase One or Phase Two did not do their level best to fairly evaluate, you know, fairly evaluate the participants. And I'll certainly go into, you know, greater detail as you want. You know, this has been a truly, you know, remarkable process. Things do change over time. And, you know, I've always been pushing for greater equity. And what you see from Phase One to Phase Two, quite happily, is greater equity. That happened in a couple different ways. Again, I can go into greater detail. I think you see it in the selection process. But you also see it because delivery came into being. And the mayor was under tremendous pressure as the Cannabis Control Commission was comprehensively revising its regulations. And we became aware that they were going to install delivery as a type. And it was my suggestion that we wait in Round Two to include that so that we don't leave this really important type of social equity component out. But having said that, we were very early to the gates to get there. So, you know, just to get to Counselor Hurst, you know, why was there only one? I don't know, you know, who applies or why. I could tell you, you know, I wrote an explanation in your Point of View magazine. I've done all my best to, you know, lecture and inform your community about things in any way I can. I think it's fantastic that we have delivery. And I think it's fantastic that Springfield was so early to the gate to get it. I mean, sometimes things look some way where they shouldn't. I think, you know, in my experience, I feel wonderfully confident that the folks I have met in Springfield want to be fair and evaluate people neutrally. And I've never seen anything different in my experience. I will say that fairness doesn't mean that everyone will be happy, right? So it doesn't surprise me that people who aren't selected are unhappy with that and in a phased approach, they have to wait till the next phase. And, you know, so this doesn't surprise me that there are unhappy people. I didn't score them, but I could assure them they were you know, nobody was playing games, to my knowledge. You know, they were scored fairly. And for whatever reason, someone thought somebody else was superior. So, you know, that's sort of where we are. And I just want to be very clear that, you know, due process fairness is what I'm about. I would never be involved, never, ever would I be involved or put my reputation in any way aligned with folks who were not acting in the best interest of the public. And I want to be extremely clear to you all about that.
So thank you, Attorney Steiner. I think you are crystal clear. And I think one of the, you know, unfortunate implications of an audit is that folks are doing wrong. And I can't stress enough, and I appreciate the fact that you say you welcome an audit. We all should welcome an audit, you know. And I think if everything's above board, then an audit, you know, will show us how we might be able to improve. And, you know, I don't think any, I think the Selection Committee, you know, this is not an indictment on the Selection Committee. I think it's more about the process. And if we can get better, then we ought to want to get better. And, you know, just one last point in terms of delivery, and I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but I appreciate your support for delivery. You know, I don't think that Young, based off of what I've seen, he may or may not go that in-depth in terms of delivery and how, you know, how we marketed delivery. What I do know, and what I also will give to Young, is that I am in possession of a letter from the mayor advocating to the CCC against delivery. And so, you know, let's be clear. I appreciate your efforts. But at the same time, you know, the letter says otherwise, because we all know what delivery had the potential to do, which is one of the reasons why I'm so, you know, I'm so disappointed in the fact that we only had one applicant. Now, I don't know if we could have done more. I'm hopeful Young and his team will be able to identify some recommendations in terms of really, you know, advancing delivery. My thought process is it probably should be on a rolling basis. I feel the same way about cultivation. But neither here nor there, you know, we need to look into what it is that we really want and what it is that we're advocating for, because we weren't all in favor of delivery. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to start by saying, since you're talking about delivery, I actually did go to the consultant, Ms. Steiner, and asked that she speak to the mayor about keeping applications for delivery open, because we know that in the beginning, social equity applicants are the ones who are awarded those type of applications. And it's for three years. And so to give, you know, that group of folks the opportunity to obtain a license in that timeframe, I guess it's three years you have from when the state delivers its first delivery license. There's three years from there. But, you know, it probably would take a little bit more time to raise the capital, get the team together, and the legal aspect together for this population. And so I was hoping that we could keep that application process open for delivery, but I did not get a response there. So as far as the process, I think that folks were doing their best. I think that, I don't know what everybody's best entails. I know I was doing my best. And there were some changes from the first round to the second round that... So the first round, we had more input on the whole application process. The second round, we didn't have a lot of input on the changes, and I questioned that. And I was told that, and I believe I was told from Ed, it was just changes based on the changes at the Cannabis Control Commission level. And so they had to make some, like, minor changes to the application. They did have a meeting that I couldn't attend, and I believe they discussed those changes. And the only recollection that I can remember getting about the changes to the application is that we will be scoring different sections of the application than we did in the first round. Other than that, I don't remember getting any further detail about the changes to the application. All I know is that we had a lot of input the first round on the application process and very limited input the second round of the application. Another thing that I want to clarify, because I read the notice that came out from the mayor's office that says, "Based on the Review Committee's recommendation, which consider the criteria regarding traffic congestion, public safety," and so on and so forth, here is what we recommended. Now, I want to make clear, we did not give a list of names of who we recommended to the mayor. What we did is individually gave our scoring system. And based on how folks scored is how the mayor chose. Well, I don't even know if it was based on how they scored. The mayor made his decision based on the scoring criteria that we gave him. We did not sit there and write a list of names of companies and say, "Here is who we recommend, Mr. Mayor." And so I just wanted to make that clear, because in all communications, it says, "Recommended by the committee." And my name is clearly listed. And I want to make it clear that we did not do that. We did not give a name of any organization. He chose the organizations that he wanted to bring forward. We just gave the scoring criteria. So I just wanted to make that point clear. Other than that, I would like direct questions, because as Ed said, you know, we could face litigation. I don't want to, you know, put us in that situation. We're probably in that situation now. But if anyone has a direct question that they want to ask me specifically, I'm happy to answer.
And so I'm not going to allow anybody to put you on the spot, Counselor Whitfield, because I don't think that's fair. I think what will happen, and in my conversations with Young and Cecilia, is that they will be taking a deeper dive and probably asking those critical questions in an environment where you can feel comfortable to share, you know, about the process itself. And maybe, and if there are improprieties, then so be it. But I think it'll help us improve the process moving forward. And so I'll defer to Young, and he will do it with every, hopefully with every member of the Selection Committee, as I just think that's part of his due diligence. So, Young, is that accurate? If you could just chime in, either Young or Cecilia, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, that's part of our process is to interview members of the Selective Committee, you know, anyone who's involved in the process. And we would do it in an environment where they feel safe to convey other concerns and, you know, and give us an opportunity to, you know, also address some of their concerns when we review documents and records. But again, that's part of our process is to meet with the Selective Committee members to get a deeper understanding about the whole process.
One more thing, if I may, Mr. Chair. I wanted to mention is that during the process, everyone that gave rank or score outside of me worked directly for the administration. I think that that is something that Young should look into. I don't know if that should be how it is. I, you know, I don't know. I felt a little bit singled out when asking for information or making suggestions. But I just think that it should be a broader span of people outside of who works in the administration. I also asked for some information in writing. An opinion, actually, from Ed. I asked for it in the meeting, on the record, and I asked for it via email, and I never received that. And so those are the only things that I kind of like want to mention. As a counselor, I think that, and as a constituent, if we're requesting information, especially when it's regarding the process, that we should get that information prior to folks being selected. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
You, Counselor Whitfield, and I certainly think everything that you said is relevant and certainly things that Young know. Hopefully, Young will hopefully be able to do a deeper dive into to see how we can, in turn, better the process. Certainly, if there's information out there that the committee needs, it seems to me that they ought to have that information prior to moving forward. So with that said, are there any other members of the Selection Committee that would like to speak? Are there any other follow-up questions from counselors? If not, I don't see any hands in the queue. That will conclude the Audit Committee meeting. Once again, I want to thank everyone from the administration for coming. Julie, Julie, thank you so much for, I know you said you're on a rare vacation. I appreciate you being in attendance and certainly to the general public. Thank you all for being here as well.
You have a question.
Was there a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me acknowledge President Marcus Williams. I did not see you there, sir.
No, appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Hurst, and thank you all for joining the call. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Counselor Whitfield for undertaking this process, again, this due process, to, you know, provide input and join an 11-member committee, as was mentioned by Ms. Steiner, to select not only recreational but the cultivation applicants. I know it was a heavy undertaking. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for, you know, certainly accepting the invitation and the reappointment to join that committee again. So with that being said, I just had a quick question, and maybe Ed can provide some context. I know other municipalities are, you know, interesting in how they look at, you know, how to select the folks who will be occupying spaces for cannabis. One of the questions I had was, is there any contingency around, you know, what proceeds, what in regards to the special permitting and HCA process?
Well, generally speaking, you can't have a special permit without an HCA.
Right.
And going for a special permit usually takes a lot of time and effort. And it seems to make more sense to go through the HCA first. And generally, there may be more HCA's than there are special permits. But to have an applicant at the CCC, you're required to have an HCA. So that's the other thing, to have a complete application and to be able to get your license. You need to have the HCA. And then they contact the municipality and say, have they complied with all the municipal requirements? A special permit is not a requirement of the CCC. It's a requirement in Springfield. It's the HCA that's a requirement of the legislation. And so that really is where the determination needs to be made first, rather than the special permit.
Thank you, Attorney Pakula. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to add to that, we, I appreciate you, Solicitor. We were able to create a seamless process in terms of folks getting their HCA and then their special permit, until the process wasn't seamless anymore. And we had an applicant who was unfortunately waiting much longer than necessary to receive her HCA, at which time I scheduled a special permit or encouraged her to schedule this, to get a special permit so that she wasn't waiting forever, you know, in the event that, you know, she was certainly, or this particular applicant had, you know, I mean, there are a lot of issues when things are delayed, especially as it relates to money. And so, you know, it can happen, I guess.
And I wanted to highlight that as well, Mr. Chair. Being a member of the committee, folks are calling me about what's the next step in the process? When will they be able to negotiate their HCA agreement? And I'm referring them back to the administration, because I have nothing to do with that process. But if we can, for those applicants that have been chosen, if we can move that process along for them, that would be great. I don't think that it should be a holdup with them. If they were selected, they were selected, and we should look at moving that process along. And I did want to mention that, I don't know if I did mention from the application process in the first round to the second round, there were certain portions of the application, I think I did say it, that we reviewed in the second application process, whereas we reviewed the entire application in the first round. So that was a significant change in the application process. I think I did say that. So we had certain sections that we reviewed based on, like, our level of knowledge. Like, I wouldn't know all of the zoning laws. So Phil and Steve handled those portions. And I wouldn't know all of the criteria that Health and Human Services had to do. That same with safety, with the police and fire and things like that. And so I think that that was a great change to the process, because the applications are huge. But I did want to note that that was like the major difference in the first process to the second process, for me.
You, Counselor Whitfield, if there are no further questions and I see no hands raised in the queue, thank you, everyone, for coming. And Young and Cecilia, thank you so much for taking on this endeavor. And we certainly look to hear from you in the very near future.
Thank you.